Greetings, students. So, welcome to our very first study session for exam number one. Typically, my face-to-face classes, I do a study session on the day of the exam, right before the exam. Because my goal for you is to walk away with the core or basic information that you need to know about human development. I'm not interested that you can recite every statistic or every fact from our textbook, because it would probably be impossible. Our textbook is just a plethora, a wealth of information, a little bit too much for most of us to be able to store into our long-term memory. So, what I have today is our study guide number one. I'm gonna run through it as quickly as possible. I know that most students have a short attention span, so I'm trying to keep this video as short as possible. Yeah, I wanna make sure that you have the right information for the exam and that you learn it. So, let's get going. So, what does the study of human development seek to understand? How and why? How and why do we change? Why are we different from each other? Okay? What are the five steps to the scientific method? The very first step is that we're curious and we pose a question. I wonder what if? Right? The second step is that we form a hypothesis, right? A specific prediction. So, we say something like, "I wonder if I eat more broccoli, will it improve my eyesight?" Right? Number three in the scientific method is we conduct the study. We do the research, right? As you saw in your PowerPoint slides, we have a control group and an experimental group, and we look to see if whatever it was we administered, whether it was a drug or whether it was broccoli, did that change in step number four? Which in step number four is we decide, was my hypothesis correct or incorrect? Does the research support my hypothesis or refute my hypothesis? And step number five is we have to report out the results, right? We always wanna share the information. As you saw in this week's case study number two, I am sharing the voices of the foster youth who have shared their voice with me. So, we need to let other people know what they can do to help this particular student population. What's a hypothesis? It's a prediction that can be tested, right? So, in your study, in your exam number one, it may give you a situation where it says, "Doctor so-and-so poses or says that an increase in broccoli will lead to improved eyesight." Right? So, that's an example of a hypothesis. They're giving a specific prediction, and we're gonna test that prediction, right? So, your exam might actually give you an example of what a hypothesis looks like. Nature versus nurture, right? Nature is our genes. Nurture is the environment. So, this age-old question of nature versus nurture, what we really say in development is that we're a combination or a result of both. So, we are a result of both nature and nurture working together. The lifespan perspective takes into account all of the different developmental stages, from conception to death. Remember this? Because this is a question that I have a lot of students miss on the exam. Students will choose the answer from birth to death. But actually, let's think back on chapter, on week number one, right? We actually talked about how is a zygote formed? That one-celled organism, how is it created? So, we talked about what happens in the womb before birth, and then we talked about birth and so forth. So, you wanna make sure to select the answer. Conception to death is what we're gonna be covering in this class. What's a cohort? So, a cohort is a group of individuals that go through some of life experiences with you. Think of your cohort as maybe your high school graduating class, right? So, a group of individuals roughly your age group that have had these same experiences as you as far as what's going on in society at that time. What is SES? SES is socio-economic status, right? It's based on several things. So, it's based on your income, your wealth, your neighborhood, your occupation, and your education. So, again, in the exam, it might give you a situation as an example and say something like, "Jose comes from a very affluent neighborhood with a school district that is in the top 2% in the nation, and his parents are both professionals with graduate degrees. What type of SES do you think Jose has?" And we might say that Jose is in an upper-class category, right? So, that might be a situation that you experience. What's another term for SES? It's social class. Here in our Western society in particular, we definitely focus on social class. We focus on who has and do who doesn't have according to the standard of money and wealth and education and all of those different types of things. What type of construction is race? Race is socially constructed, and I know this might go against the belief that many of you have. So, race is socially constructed. What that means is, we as a society have determined what race looks like. I give the example in class that, at one point recently, I was stopped in a shopping center by someone who told me that I had a very fair complexion and that I must be Eastern European. And I corrected the individual that I was not Eastern European. I'm actually Mexican-American. So, my ancestors come from the state of Jalisco, Mexico. And the individual proceeded to argue with me that that is not possible. There's no way I could have the complexion I have if I were Mexican-American, right? Why was it so difficult for this individual to accept that I was Mexican-American? The answer is because I'm not dark enough in their mind. Because we again have constructed what it looks like to be Mexican-American or what it looks like to be African-American. If we see a person of the African-American heritage, and maybe they have a very petite nose or they have some very tiny features, we think, "Oh, there must be some white mixed in there," right? We as a society have determined what it looks like to have certain physical characteristics, and that's what race is. Race is very different from ethnicity, right? So, when we talk about explaining the difference between race and ethnicity, my ethnicity is my Mexican-American heritage. Your culture, where your ancestors came from, is your ethnicity. Race is something that we prescribe to people based on how they look. So, it's flawed, right? That's why we say it's socially constructed. It's not actually fact. What's the definition of culture? Culture is the system of shared beliefs, conventions, norms, behaviors, and expectations. So, culture is a whole lot more than what food you like or what clothes you like to wear. It is really buying into the value system that comes along with your culture, right? So, chapter two, what's a norm? Right? A norm is an average or usual event or experience. What is reinforcement? Reinforcement is a consequence that follows a behavior that makes that person likely to repeat the behavior. So, again, we use reinforcements on our children, on our pets, right? We give treats, we give discipline. We do things that we incentivize or help the individual to say, "I wanna do that again," right? We reinforce the behavior. Another term for observational learning is modeling, right? Pavlov's experiments exemplify what kind of conditioning. So, remember in the slides, Pavlov did the experiment with dogs. And what he showed there was that he was able to condition the dogs that when the dogs heard the bell sign, they would automatically salivate because the dogs were expecting to be fed. Even when Pavlov removed the food and the bell still went off, the dogs would salivate even though they knew no food was coming. It became a programmed response. And therefore, Pavlov was using what we call classical conditioning. He had conditioned the animal to associate, "bell" means "food," "I salivate," right? And that's classical conditioning. Again, Pavlov worked with dogs. The social learning theory says learning occurs from observing and then imitating others. That's always, parents, we always have to be careful. Because your kids don't really say, care what you say as much as what you do, right? They're gonna observe you, and then they're gonna model you. Skinner's study of behavior is based on operant conditioning, right? So, Skinner says he takes classical conditioning a step further, and he says now, what we can do is we can add in rewards and punishment, right? So, if I reward you for getting good grades, you wanna continue to get good grades. If I punish you for doing something, you don't wanna do that behavior anymore. So, using rewards and punishment takes it to what we call operant conditioning. Cognitive theory is founded in a person's thoughts and expectations, right? So, again, our mind works according to what are our expectations, and we'll talk more about that as we get into relationships. Piaget's definition of assimilation is new experiences are fitted into our old way of thinking. We interpret that into what we already knew. Then we experience something new, and we go, "Okay, well, I guess this works also," right? So, I give the example, if you take your child to a certain playground every day, I would say, "Take them to different playgrounds," and they would assimilate all of this different playground structures. "Oh, this one has a slide, this one has a swing, this one has a carousel." Wow, but they're all playgrounds. So, I'm assimilating what a playground looks like. The sociocultural approach focuses on what three characteristics and not on what. The, remember, sociocultural, we're always talking about society. We're talking about the environment. We're talking about your culture and the role that that plays in your life. And so, we're focusing on culture, we're focusing on ethics, and we're focusing on sexuality. We are not focusing on genes. We're not talking about your genetics or your DNA material. We're talking about environmental factors and forces. Humanism. Humanism theory stresses the potential of all humans for good and the belief that all people have the same basic needs regardless of culture, regardless of background, regardless of gender. Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Maslow's, remember, we have the triangle when we talk about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. When we talk about that first level of the triangle, we talk about all of us need to have our basic physiological needs met first. That means we have to have food, water, and shelter. If I don't have food, I really don't care about getting an A in human development. All I can think about is, "I'm hungry, my stomach needs food." It becomes your primary objective. So, we say in Maslow's hierarchy of needs, we can't go up that triangle unless the first level is met, then the second level, then the third level, etc., right? So, after we meet our basic physiological needs, we get into safety and feeling like we're safe before we get into love and belonging. So, that first level, physiological needs. What two longstanding drives does every species have? We wanna survive and procreate or reproduce. So, survival and reproduction. Those are the two longstanding drives. Chapter three, a chromosome is your DNA. Where are genes located? They're located on your chromosomes. A genome is a full set of your genes or DNA. allele is a variation of a gene. A zygote is a single cell firmed by a sperm and an ova. It's the beginning. The 23rd pair of female chromosomes looks like X, X, right? So, that 23rd pair, which we call the sex characteristics, that pair has two Xs. What determines whether a baby will be a boy and a girl? It's the male donating that Y chromosome at the 23rd pair. That's what causes there to be a male child, right? So, in general, all embryos are inherently female. That's why for every 100 males, we have about 107 females, right? Because inherently, the embryo is female unless the male donates that Y chromosome. Stem cells are able to reproduce any other cell in your body. IVF, in vitro fertilization. So, in this process of IVF, we are going to surgically remove an egg or an ova from mom. We're gonna use a P-tradition lab, and we're going to go ahead and fertilize that ova, that egg, with sperm, whether that's from a biological father or a sperm donor, wherever that comes from. And then, once that zygote is forming there, we're able to go ahead and put that back into mom's uterus so that mom hopefully can carry to term. That's the process of IVF. The Human Genome Project is a worldwide effort to map the complete human genetic code. We wanna know what we're made up of. Alcoholism is caused by a combination of nature and nurture. So, we did learn that there is a gene for alcoholism. So, if you come from a line of alcoholics, that is something that you are gonna struggle with or there is gonna be a natural pool for you to be drawn to alcohol. And so, however, somebody can also become an alcoholic without having that gene. Environmental stress factors can cause you to drink, that you would start that process. So, alcoholism is really a combination of nature and nurture when it comes to becoming an alcoholic. Down syndrome is the most common extra-chromosomal abnormality, right? So, Down syndrome, having an extra chromosome at the 21st pair, is very common. Who is at greatest risk of having a child with chromosomal abnormality? Moms over 40. So, definitely, you're gonna see a tremendous, tremendous amount of increase in the chances of having a child with Down syndrome or another chromosomal abnormality the older you are when you have a child. So, again, as I've shared, I was 40 when I had my only biological child. And so, definitely, the doctors were concerned or they want to test to determine if the child you are carrying may have some chromosomal abnormality. So, your chances are much greater as you get older. Genetic counseling is testing by trained experts to learn the genetic heritage of a couple. So, we're trying to determine whether there is some genetic concerns in either the male or the female that if they were to conceive a child, those concerns might be passed on to that child. We kind of explored this when we talked about the Shannon family in week number one. So, again, genetic counseling would have prevented that had they been able to go to genetic counseling prior to conceiving and learning that they both were carriers of the Fanconi anemia. Chapter four, the three main stages of prenatal development are the germinal period, the embryonic period, and the fetal period. The fetal period being the longest of those three different developmental stages. Natural conception-implantation percentage. We learned in our slides when we talked about how many zygotes we lose that really only 50% of our natural conceptions are implanting or taking. The critical factor in attaining the age of viability is brain development. So, remember, we said the age of viability is 22 weeks. Pretty amazing considering it's 40 weeks for mom to carry a baby full-term. So, what we're saying is, if a child is born at at least 22 weeks with medical intervention, this child has a great chance of surviving, right? And the reason is because at 22 weeks, that brain has developed enough that it may be able to survive. Again, this is with machines putting air into the lungs for this baby, feeding this baby, all of these different things happening. But this baby may definitely have a great chance of surviving. What two things do babies do on their own at birth? They breathe, and remember, that breath is gonna lead to them crying because this baby has been swimming in amniotic fluid for nine months in mom's womb. So, this baby is gonna transition at birth, going from breathing in amniotic fluid to all of a sudden, their lungs inflating for the first time with air, which causes that cry. We want to hear that. What specific physical qualities does the APGAR scale measure? Color, heart rate, cry, muscle tonal reflexes, and breathing. The APGAR scale is used to evaluate the overall health of the newborn baby, right? We wanna do that, and we do it at a couple different times to make sure everything's okay. Induced labor is labor that is started or sped up or strengthened using drugs. So, if mom were to go past 40 weeks or there will be another type of a problem or concern, we want to induce labor to cause that to happen. A doula is a person who supports mom throughout the birth process. Think of it as a midwife. Again, I had a doula. She was wonderful. Would recommend it to many moms who are having a baby, especially for the first time. So, a doula is a midwife. Cesarean section is a surgical birth, right? So, we are gonna cut an incision in mother's abdomen and uterus for quick removal of that baby. So, ideally, we always want to have a natural birth. It is the best thing for mom and baby. However, if there are some type of complications, we may do a cesarean or a C-section, which is a surgical incision. Again, because we're cutting through muscle and we're cutting into mom, it is surgery, and that means it's more difficult for mom to recover after birth. Fetal alcohol syndrome. So, again, the exam may do something like give you an example. You have a friend that you notice drinking on a regular daily basis, and she is pregnant. What are you concerned about? We're all concerned about fetal alcohol syndrome. So, again, whatever mom is eating and drinking during that nine months of carrying a baby is gonna go directly to that baby. So, if you're drinking alcohol excessively, that baby is going to be born with fetal alcohol syndrome. Father's presence at birth. What we know from research is that dad being at the hospital or being present at birth reduces the likelihood of birth complications. Again, so we said, dad doesn't necessarily need to be in the birthing room with mom, right? So, if dad and mom can't stay on the side of each other, they're not gonna be living together or getting married. However, just knowing that dad is there to support this baby being born and be a dad hopefully to this baby for the long haul, it does something to relieve the stress of mom. And so, we know that, we know that for sure. Whatever issues you as a couple have, put that aside for this birth process to happen without complications. Postpartum depression. We have about 8 to 15% of moms who experience this postpartum depression. The rooting reflex is when we stroke a baby's cheek, and what happens is that baby will automatically turn and start doing that sucking motion to be fed. Chapter five, when do children begin to walk? On average, about a year, 12 months. When do children reach half their adult height? Two years of age. So, that just tells you that during that 0 to 2 timeframe we talked about this week, it's a tremendous growth stage that they're already at half of their adult height by the time they're two years old. Synapses. So, we're talking about cognitively. Synapses are intersections that neurons meet at. So, remember, we talked about an axon and a dendrite, and in between that is this intersection of this synapse where that, those neurotransmitters, those chemicals that carry instruction are jumping from one neuron or one brain cell to the next. So, again, neurotransmitters are brain chemicals that carry information from one neuron to the next, and a neuron is a brain cell. Shaking baby syndrome is a life-threatening condition, life-threatening condition when infants are shaken back and forth quickly. So, I mentioned this in my face-to-face class that when we have a baby and we have that baby that is still forming, your brain, again, all of us, our brain is securely housed in this thick skull, right? And there's a reason that our skull is so thick because it needs to protect our most valuable asset, which is our brain. And so, if we were to take, particularly a man who doesn't always realize their strength, if we were to take an infant and shake that infant because the infant is crying nonstop or because you're irritable, whatever it is, and you shake that baby, you have the danger of basically disconnecting the brain stem from that skull, and this baby will be dead, right? So, we can easily kill a baby with the force of shaking that baby because of their age and the fact that that brain is not fully secure and developed in the skull yet. Shaken baby syndrome. Lullabies, newborns love them because they're really soothing and rhythmic. That's why our mobiles over the crib have music to them, right? Because that music is very, very, it helps the babies to go to sleep. Co-sleeping. Talk about sleeping together or co-sleeping. Definitely, there's cultural influences when we talk about co-sleeping, and it's much easier for nighttime feeding. So, we showed a slide that talked about the cultural differences here in the West. I think maybe we have less than 20%, 15% of our moms who co-sleep with their babies. However, if we looked at some of the countries such as Japan, Vietnam, China, we were looking at 80% of moms who co-sleep with their children. So, there's real big cultural differences on whether or not you believe in co-sleeping. What we know is one of the pros for co-sleeping is if you're nursing in particular, being able to have your baby near you is a lot easier than having to go into another room to that crib to feed your baby. Which emotion is apparent at birth? Pain. You hear your baby cry, first thing off, right? So, they're gonna feel pain. Motor skills, the ability to move and control parts of the body. And we talked about fine and gross motor skills. So, again, fine motor skills are the small body movements, gross motor skills, the large body movements. Infant and child mortality. We've had a slight decline in this because of clean water that we're getting into other countries, immunizations, nourishing food. These have all had a dramatic impact in decreasing the amount of babies and young children that we've had dying. Breast milk. Breast milk provides antibodies to fight disease, and it's more digestible than fats and sugars that are housed in formula. So, remember those two things. So, first of all, it should be very clear that breast milk is the best thing possible for your baby. Even if you can only nurse for the first few days of life, the first three days, there are antibodies in your nursing milk that can never be reproduced by formula or in any other way. So, you're providing your infant with some protection. So, again, nursing or providing breast milk gives antibodies to your baby, and it also is much more easily digestible for your baby because formula is man-made. It has fats and sugars in it that aren't as easily digestible. Autism. There is a myth that the MMR vaccine, which is measles, mumps, and rubella vaccine that all children should be getting, causes autism. And we talked about how research has repeatedly disproved that. There is no correlation between receiving the MMR vaccine and your child becoming autistic. Chapter six, object permanence. Understanding objects continue to exist when they cannot be seen. So, I give the example that if I have an infant who is six months old, and I have my infant in front of me, and I put up a blanket over me and I hide behind the blanket, my infant will start crying because my infant thinks that mommy disappeared, right? However, as my infant gets to be about nine months of age and I do the same thing, I put up a blanket over me and I hide behind the infant, my infant does not cry because my infant has now learned object permanence. My infant now cognitively understands that mom is still there. She's behind the blanket. I understand that. Whereas, an earlier or younger infant doesn't yet understand that cognitively. That's how fast and how the brain is working. Information processing theory. So, compares human thinking processes by analogy to computer analysis of data. So, it's kind of like how we think our brain, like we watch and observe, and we accrue all this information. We process the information, and then we determine what we think about the information. Affordances are environmental opportunities to interact. So, we always want to give our children as many opportunities or affordances as possible. Every opportunity is something wonderful for your child to learn. Even again, if it's just going to different zoos or different parks or different environments, just you walking in different places allows your children to see different people, different trees, different grass, and that's all learning for your child. During the newborn period, the primary communication is reflexive, right? We talked about how your baby has reflexes. They shiver when they're cold, right? They hiccup to get that air to flow regularly, right? They do these different things. They're reflexive. Infant's perception of depth. Depth, we use the visual clipped experiment. So, we did that experiment to determine what children think about the depth and whether they would actually try to crawl over that. When do children develop cognitively? Piaget says it starts at birth. From the moment they're born, they're like an empty sponge, and it's our job to fill that sponge up. Newborns prefer the language of their mother. Whatever language that is, they're gonna, they were hearing mom's voice in the womb, and they would prefer that language. Age of word recognition is about 12 months or a year. Gesturing, this is the primary means of communication for infants, right? So, infants can't talk yet, so they're gonna point, and they're gonna show you that they want food, what they want. Order of spoken language development and influence. Well, they start off with their reflexes, remember, because they can't communicate yet. Then they go to the cooing stage, "Coo." Then they go to the babbling stage, "Ba, ba, ba." And then finally, they go to the spoken word stage. So, those four in that order. What theorist says children learn language as a result of reinforcements? Remember, Skinner, who does operant conditioning. Skinner says that we can reinforce with positive and negative consequences. Right, chapter seven, emotions in infants. The last to develop is pride, and the first to be expressed is pain. Stranger weariness. That's an infant's distress at seeing an unfamiliar person, especially if mom reacts to that person. If mom is anxious, the baby is gonna feel anxious too. Separation anxiety is when a baby acts upset because their caregiver, mom, dad, grandma, whoever that be, adoptive parent, is leaving. So, again, if you've had your baby and you've been home for a little while and it's time for your first night out, and you're gonna leave your baby with the babysitter, I expect that baby to cry. I expect there to be some tears that mom's gonna be leaving, and that separation anxiety, separation anxiety. The four categories of temperaments for a child, meaning that kind of like this is what you get, parents, when we have a child born. You get an easy baby, a difficult baby, one that's kind of slow to warm up to and others that I don't know what the heck you are, you're hard to classify, okay? So you can have your first child be very easy and you can have a second child that's a little more challenging. Synchrony, synchrony is this coordinated interaction between mom or caregiver and infant, right? You start to understand each other's expressions, right? Your tone of voice, you develop this synchrony. Fathers with infants. So compared to moms, dads are much more likely to engage in physical play like tumble, roughen play. And they're much more likely to make their babies laugh. And again, I talked about this in class that this is because moms tend to be focused on, I need to make sure I get the dishes done, mop the floors, I need to make sure I wash the baby's laundry. I've got lots of things to do and I play with my child, but it's not always kind of maybe roughen tumble or laughing play. Dads tend to be a little bit more hands-on in that respect. And so that's a positive thing. So two things dad helpless is going to be engaging in physical play and making their babies laugh. Attachment, this is our case study for this week. Attachment is a lasting emotional bond that infants form with at least one caregiver. Right? And so we'll talk a little bit more, I'll talk a little bit more in video number three about attachment when we talk about our case study um, at the end of this week. But all of us either did or didn't form this attachment. And again, if you were traumatized as a child or if you just didn't reach to have a caregiver that changed your diaper or fed you or held you or said I love you or did any of those things, then you lacked attachment. And what that means is in adulthood, you're a lot less trusting um, than those of us who did have a healthy attachment with an adult. Secure attachment makes a child willing to explore. So that means that when I leave my baby with the babysitter, they're going to have separation anxiety, they're going to cry for a little bit. But after a while, they're going to start wandering around and say, let me check out the toys. Let me see who's over here, right? And they're going to be willing to explore, that's a positive thing. Child's activity during the oral and anal stage. So we said, or Freud Ericson says that uh, basically during the oral stage, babies want to put everything in their mouth and that's where a pacifier comes into play. That's what you expect to see your baby using or doing during the oral stage. During the anal stage, we're going to say that your baby is learning to potty train. It's a big deal for them to be able to go potty by themselves, no longer use diapers, right? And so that's the anal stage when a baby is learning autonomy because the baby is learning to control their bowels. Erickson's theory says infant's earliest task. So remember, for this class, we're going to focus on Erickson and his eight stages of human development. And the first stage, one of the most important, is going to be trust versus mistrust. So if we had a caregiver that we formed a healthy attachment to, we learn to trust the world. However, if we didn't form that healthy attachment as an adult, we learn that we can't trust people and we have some difficulty in relationships. And we'll talk more about what that looks like. Self-rule or autonomy is having control over your own body, right? So we talked about the anal stage, right? And babies finding pleasure and stimulating their own bowels, right? That's what happens. Problems and conflicts from early childhood could adversely affect your personality. So one of them being the example of mistrust that when you experienced or had those problems in early childhood, you developed to be a very guarded person and you have a hard time letting people in. And we'll talk about again what that looks like later on. Um, proximal parenting. It means that our caregiving really involves a lot of physical touch or physical closeness um, with frequent touching and holding with our kids. So we're, we're very close in proximity or in touch with our children compared to distal parenting. So I know this was rather quick, but I wanted to make sure to keep your attention. I kind of ran through the information. This is what you should be focusing on to know for exam number one.